Good evening, and I'd like to call to order our Tuesday, December 18th, 2018, Pickwa City Commission meeting. Let us stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have our roll call, please?
Mayor Heinz.
Here.
Commissioner Martin.
Here.
Commissioner Vogt.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Short.
Here.
Okay, and the next thing on our agenda are announcements. Do we have any announcements this evening?
Well, I have one. I'd like to make it, tonight on the dais you see our law director filling in for the time period, Mr. Frank Patrizio. So, welcome Frank to the, back to the, to the dais again for this time.
Well, thank you.
Any other announcements? If not, we will move to our consent agenda.
There's one item on the consent agenda tonight, it's approval of the minutes from the December 4th, 2018, regular city commission meeting.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The consent agenda passes. And now we move to our old business. The first is ordinance number 16-18, it is a third reading.
An ordinance repealing Schedule A of Chapter 33 of the Pickwa Code and adopting a new Schedule A of Chapter 33 of the Pickwa Code relating to wages of certain municipal employees.
I'm going to call on Ms. Bogut to present items number two, three, and four.
Good evening, Commissioners. Schedule A covers the salaries of full-time, non-union employees. There are six steps in each classification. Each step has been increased by 2%.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission on this ordinance? Any questions or comments from the public on this ordinance? If not, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, the ordinance passes. And now we move to ordinance number 17-18, this is also a third reading.
An ordinance repealing Schedule A 1 of Chapter 33 of the Pickwa Code and adopting a new Schedule A 1 of Chapter 33 of the Pickwa Code relating to wages of certain municipal employees.
Thank you. Schedule A 1 covers part-time, seasonal, and temporary employees. The wages for certain employees will be adjusted in accordance with state minimum wage requirements. Specific titles, harvest operator, and seasonal green superintendent have been added to reflect specific seasonal duties.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission on this ordinance? Any questions or comments from our public on this ordinance? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, ordinance number 17-18 passes. And now we move to ordinance number 18-18, this is also a third reading.
An ordinance repealing existing Chapter 33.08 and enacting a new Chapter 33.08 of the Pickwa Code relating to employee insurance.
Thank you. This ordinance updates Chapter 33.08 of the Pickwa Code to set the new benefit year for employee health insurance to 2019.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission? Any questions or comments from our public on this ordinance? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move we adopt ordinance number 18-18.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance passes. And now we move to ordinance number 19-18, this is also a third reading.
An ordinance to make appropriations for the City of Pickwa, Ohio for the year 2019.
Ms. Holtzapple will provide the staff report.
Thank you. The city is required to pass a 2019 budget appropriation prior to this year-end. The commission has reviewed this in detail with departments throughout November. Passage tonight will meet all these requirements and allow us to properly file this with the county and other entities.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission? Any questions or comments from the public on this ordinance? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move we adopt resolution 19-18.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ordinance passes. And now we move to ordinance number 20-18, this is also a third reading.
An ordinance amending Section 154.025B, General Business District of the City of Pickwa Code of Ordinances.
Mr. Smeazing.
Thank you. The proposed amendment will modify the B General Business section of the zoning code to include hospitals as a principal permitted use. This use type aligns very nicely with the purpose and intent of the B General Business section of the zoning code. The planning commission conducted a public hearing on November 13th, 2018, and as a result of their findings of that hearing, they recommended approval of this item.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the commission? Any questions or comments from the public on this ordinance? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance. Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, the ordinance passes. And now we move to our new business. The first is ordinance number 21-18, it is a first reading, and we have been asked to waive that first reading, so...
To waive all three readings for the end of the year, yes.
An emergency amended ordinance to make appropriations for the City of Pickwa, Ohio for the year 2018.
Ms. Holtzapple.
Thank you. The city is required to pass a final 2018 appropriation prior to this year-end. The 2018 original appropriation has been amended for the timing of expenses, projects, and their completion, and grants and their receiving. To meet our requirement tonight, as indicated, we are requesting waiving the second and third reading with passage tonight.
Thank you.
I can make a motion to waive the three reading rule.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor of waiving the three readings, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes. And now we have the ordinance before us. Do we have any questions or comments? I know this is general, just kind of housekeeping at the end of the year.
Any major changes?
No, the two major changes were, unfortunately, we didn't get the safety grant for the fire trucks, so we amended according to that, and we have reapplied for next year. And then also, the refuse building is on hold, and so we'll be addressing that in next year's budget also. Those are the two major changes.
Any other questions or comments from the commission? Any questions or comments from the public? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move we adopt resolution, or ordinance number 21-18. Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, the ordinance passes. And now we move to resolution number R-153-18.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for city membership to the American Municipal Power Incorporated.
Mr. Craigor will be presenting items eight through 13.
Thank you. The next six items were all unanimously recommended for Pickwa City Commission approval at our November, regular scheduled November Energy Board meeting. Five of the six items relate to 2019 expenditures and processes that are required to be in place on January 1st when the year starts, and the other item is a cleanup from 2018. The first item relates to the city's membership in American Municipal Power. As you're aware, City of Pickwa Power System, over 75% of our budget is related to power supply. Since 2007, AMP has been managing the city's power supply. We're participants in a number of projects through AMP, Prairie State, Fremont, the hydro projects, wind power purchase, and most recently, the Staunton Solar Project, which was completed this, during this year. So we're asking, asking for approval for legislation to pay membership dues to American Municipal Power for 2019.
Any questions or comments from the commission on this resolution? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, the resolution passes. And now we move to resolution number R-154-18.
A resolution retaining the services of Cooperative Response Center Incorporated to provide professional customer call answering and dispatch services for the power system.
Again, this is another longstanding process that's been in place since 2007 when we eliminated the 24/7 operation at the City of Pickwa Power Plant. At that time, we began contracting with Cooperative Response Center to handle all of the power systems after our calls and dispatching services. They've continued to do an excellent job, and the rates for this service have really been flat throughout that time period. So we're asking for approval to continue that service in 2019.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission on this resolution? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, the resolution passes. And now we move to resolution number R-155-18.
A resolution authorizing the city purchasing agent to purchase number two fuel oil on the open and spot market.
As I mentioned previously, the power supply makes up a large portion of the power system's budget. The operation of the city's gas turbines, combustion turbines are an integral part of that process, and typically provide the customers of the power system over a month of free power for the year based on our ability to peak shave during the summer. The past few years, we've done a really commendable job of operating those units. We've, we've come to this commission in the past requesting upgrades to the units, and they're really operating very reliably today because of those investments. This legislation will allow us to buy fuel oil necessary to operate those units to peak shave in 2019.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission on this resolution? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. I'll second it.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The resolution passes. And now we move to resolution number R-156-18.
A resolution retaining the services of UIS Power Services to provide professional electrical testing and engineering services for the power system.
This item is actually a housekeeping item for 2018. I've been in front of this commission for the end of last year and this year for items related to our breaker replacement project. We completed the first three oil breaker replacements in, at the end of this year at our substation number five. And extensive engineering services and power services is the company that we used for commissioning and testing and some engineering related to this project. We typically use power services for our routine testing of our substations. We're on a four-year rotation, so they'll come in each year and test a substation for us, and expenditures for those, that testing service is typically $10,000 to $15,000 a year. So when we coupled that preventative maintenance service from early in the year with these commissioning services, we've exceeded the $25,000 threshold for the city manager's approval level. So we're requesting approval to complete the payment to power services for commissioning services and testing services for Pickwa substations in 2018.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission on this resolution? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move to adopt resolution R-156-18.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, the resolution passes. And now we move to resolution number R-157-18.
A resolution retaining the services of Sawwell and Associates to provide professional consulting and engineering services for the power system.
Again, this is another item that we like to have in place to hit the ground running in 2019. Sawwell's an engineering consulting service company that's been working with us in excess of the time that I've been here, so well over 20 years. Keep talking about power supply and how important it is for providing competitive rates for our customers. Sawwell's really a key resource for us. They help us evaluate opportunities as they come available through our membership and AMP. They've also assisted us in the past with updating our long-range business plan and also completing cost of service studies. So this legislation will allow us to continue to utilize Sawwell services in 2019.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission on this resolution? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move to adopt resolution number R-157-18.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, the resolution passes. And now we move to resolution number R-158-18.
A resolution authorizing a purchase order to Nelson Tree Service LLC for electric power line clearance.
So the power system has been utilizing a contract, Tree Service, to provide electric line clearance services for, to ensure reliable electric service for a number of years. We've had a full-time, three-man crew working throughout the year, and Nelson has actually completed the 13th year of service. We bid this out every, at least every three years, and this would be their 14th year that they've been awarded the contract. We basically structured this as an annual contract with the ability to extend up to two years, which we typically have done, as long as we're pleased with the service. They've been providing very reliable and, and done a nice job from a quality standpoint over the years. So we're recommending we approve the one-year contract, and then also with the ability to extend, should we think that that's merited in 2020 and '21 as well.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission on this resolution? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, the resolution passes. And now we move to resolution number R-159-18.
A resolution authorizing a purchase order to Miami Valley Risk Management Association for the purchase of its insurance.
Ms. Bogut.
Thank you. This resolution updates our existing contract with Moverma for the year of 2019.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move to adopt resolution R-159-18.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, the resolution passes. And now we move to resolution number R-160-18.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a lease agreement to permit the usage of Mo Park to the Miami Valley Boy Scouts of America.
Ms. Van Horn will present her first item.
The Miami Valley Boy Scouts of America are requesting exclusive use of Mo Park for their Two Rivers District Klondike Event. This event is a day-long event where scouts ages 6 to 18 years old will participate in various activities, and they'll be using the building and surrounding areas for these activities.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission?
I think it's a very worthy cause. Very happy that they're going there.
I agree. My son was involved in scouts, and I think scouting is a very, very needed program in our community, especially for our young people. So, thank you. Do you guys have anything to say today, or?
Yeah.
Nope? Okay. All right. Thank you for being here, and thank you for, for providing this. This is great.
It's all right. If you need anything, let us, let me know. I'm glad to help.
All right, and if there's nothing else from the public, do we have a motion on this resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve it. Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, the resolution passes. You guys have a great time. Thank you. And now we move to resolution number R-161-18.
A resolution authorizing transfers of cash from the general fund to the other funds for the fiscal year 2018.
Ms. Holtzapple will provide the staff reports for items 16 through 20.
Thank you. The next four resolutions are companion resolutions, and their procedure we go through each year. This particular resolution is required by the Auditor of State's Ohio Compliance Supplement, which in the commission approval is required on transfers for 2018. This resolution satisfies the final 2018 transfer requirement.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the commission? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, the resolution passes. And now we move to resolution number R-162-18.
A resolution authorizing transfers of cash from the general fund to other funds for the fiscal year 2019.
The Auditor of State Ohio Compliance Supplement also requires commission approval for these type of transfers for 2019. So this resolution satisfies the initial 2019 transfer requirement.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, the resolution passes. And now we move to resolution number R-163-18.
A resolution authorizing temporary loan of cash from the general fund to the other funds for the fiscal year 2018.
The same compliance supplement also requires commission approval for that of temporary loans, which are used throughout the year to fund projects until the approved grant funds are received by the city. This resolution satisfies the final 2018 requirement.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
All right, it has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, the resolution passes. And now we move to resolution number R-164-18.
A resolution authorizing temporary loan of cash from the general fund to the other funds for the fiscal year 2019.
Similarly, commission approval is required for temporary loans used in projects for 2019, so this resolution satisfies the initial 2019 requirement.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission?
I just want to know what a distressed set aside is.
I just, it's a grant that's used potentially for blighted areas where we can go in and help with certain restoration or improvements, those type of things.
Sounds good to me. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any questions from our public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The resolution passes. And now we move to resolution number R-165-18.
A resolution authorizing the city purchasing analyst to advertise for bids to make certain purchases during the 2019 year.
We are required to advertise in a newspaper of local circulation for bids for any capital or operational purchases over 25,000. We ask for commission approval for the purchasing analysts to be authorized to advertise for those items anticipated in the 2019 budget. Passage tonight will allow for proceeding January 1st, or as the department and projects need to.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission on this resolution? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution?
I do want to make a note for people to know that these bids will be listed in Pickwa Daily Call, so our local businesses, if you are looking to bid for things like that, please keep your eye on the newspaper to see what it is that we are seeking. That is where it will be every time, correct?
And they're also on our website.
And also on the website, obviously, yes.
So, is it called the Miami Valley Today now?
Yes, it is. Yeah.
Any other questions from the public? If not, I will entertain a motion then.
So moved. Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, the resolution passes. And now we move to resolution number R-166-18.
A resolution to award a contractor Birch Hydro Incorporated for wastewater biosolid processing and hauling services.
Mr. Melvin will provide us the staff report.
Thank you. We're here to ask your consideration to continue service with Birch Hydro. They, currently, they operate the belt filter press. It is their own. They have conveyor system, they have a polymer feed system, and they have some pumps, and also the use of their dump truck. Plus, they actually haul biosolids to the fields and deploy the biosolids. 2019's an interesting year for us. We're in full construction, as you guys know, and we will, hard to believe, this time next year, already have commissioned use of our equipment with the handling of all the liquid stream through the tankage, and then also, we will be running our own equipment for the biosolids handling. We do have a picture, I believe, up on the screen. Not as, there we go. So your lower left-hand corner, this is a picture facing north toward the dome and the power plant. Lower left-hand corner, Birch, or, I'm sorry, Peterson is working on a free-span 140-by-50 building for us to house our centrifuge, and we would take over the processing of the biosolids. Currently, you see about in the middle of the picture Birch Building, well, that's our, currently the press building. The, the night, we're hoping Plan A goes as planned. They will build our building, we will take over and commission it, process it, and be able to store it in that building. And then Birch will clear out of that building, and then we will finish out with the rest of our equipment in that building. If all goes as planned, we're looking at fall of next year to be able to do that. But in the, in the meantime, we need to, or we would like to continue with Birch. It's kind of, like I said, a transition year for us. Currently, we're about 40% of the way through, so August of 2020, we're at final completion.
Great, thank you. It's great to see this aerial shot.
Thank you, Ed and Brett, for Brett Reed at Power for these pictures. They, it's nice to see the progression, because, you know, we started out last year in September with bare ground, and 90% of the concrete's poured. The, the Headworks building has brick on it already, or is working on getting brick on it. If we have a good winter, they'll, they'll fly through this pretty quick. Biosolids building, like I said, will be, it'll be erected by spring, and then they'll pour the floor and start putting equipment in. We have equipment on site now. It's, you know, we, the, some of the electrical panels are already in the Headworks building, so it's moving.
That's great. If we could have days like today for the rest of winter, it'd be perfect, so...
And we should vote on that, too.
We should vote on that. I agree. I agree. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the commission on this resolution? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye.[1751.92] Okay, the resolution passes. And now we have our final resolution tonight. Resolution number R-167-18.
A resolution requesting consent to award a contract to Quality Masonry Company for the 111 South Main Street Building Roof, Masonry, and Structural Repair Project.
Mr. Spasing.
Thank you. The riverfront development strategy identifies three projects critical to seeding the riverfront with more activity and people to begin the transformation of this area of the downtown. One of the three projects is the redevelopment of the 111 South Main Street Building. Authorization of the roof, masonry, and structural repairs project before you this evening will allow for the third phase of the work necessary to ready the structure for occupancy to move forward. We recently received seven bids, with the two low bids being very competitive, the low bidder being Quality Masonry Company. We have checked their references and looked at their past work history and found them to be quite qualified and capable of completing the work specified for this scope. And so at this point, Quality Masonry Company is ready to move forward upon our executing contracts, and they expect to be complete with the work by April 15th of 2019. We originally budgeted $130,000 for this project. The low bid came in at $136,100. We are asking for an additional $13,900 in contingency. We're working with an older building. We're doing some structural improvements, so we want to make sure that we've got a little wiggle room if something surprises us. There is $107,344 that will come from the Community Development Block Grant for our downtown revitalization program that will help offset the cost of this project. The balance will be local dollars, and if we stay at the base bid amount, that would result in $28,756 in local dollars.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission on this resolution? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The resolution passes. And now we move to the public comment portion of our meeting. I want to remind people who come forward to state your name and your address and to limit your conversation or your comments to about five minutes. So do we have any public comment this evening? If not, we will move to our city manager's report.
Thank you very much. I'm happy to announce tonight that the roundabout is open, and I hope everybody's enjoying the many circles going around it. So it's worked out real well, and we're really happy with the design. So people have said it's pretty easy to get through there, so we're glad this project is completed. New trash cans are currently being delivered. The first are being delivered to Wednesday Collection, and then we'll take a little break for the holiday as we pick up a lot of trash, and then we'll be back on getting the rest of the city with their new trash cans. Wilson Health is partnering with Valley Regional Surgical Center on Looney Road to provide more outpatient care and surgical capacity, so we continue to see Wilson Health expand services into Pickwa. Of course, last week, we had the groundbreaking for the new Kettering Medical Facility. Some interesting news from the U.S. Census Bureau. They just released their five-year data sets. This would be 2013 through 2017. The median household income has increased by about 10%, going from in 2013, $36,150 to $43,849. This is a pretty significant increase in five years. The poverty rate dropped from 23.4% in 2013 to 15% in 2017. Kids living in poverty, the rate went from 40% in 2013 to 17.4% in 2017, 2013 to 2017. And then the 2017 population of Pickwa increased 2.3% to 20,987. That would have been in July of 2017. I can guarantee you that we are over the 21,000 mark now with no question. So those are some good demographic results that we're getting in, and we hope to continue to improve with those demographics over the next few years. January 1st commission meeting is canceled. It falls on New Year's Day, so I don't think anyone will be here anyway, so that meeting is officially canceled. And tonight, I just want to say Becky and Steve Cool have been doing what they're doing. Steve has been operating the cameras and recording the commission meetings for over 20 years. Becky's been doing this job as clerk of the commission for 30?
29.
29. 29 years. So they are retiring from this work at the end of the month, and we certainly have appreciated just staying with us for so long. It's been amazing. It's great, and we want to wish them the best. Becky will also be retiring from her admin job at the end of January. So they're planning on doing some traveling. They've got a serious traveling machine to go in, and we want to have them to really enjoy that time. But I think Becky, on behalf of everyone in the City of Pickwa, all the staff, and I know the elected officials, we want to say thank you to you and to Steve for such wonderful service over these years, so we are very appreciative of that. So that's my comments. And we'll be making more of a big to-do about this as the time goes on in the next month, so just so you know.
Hope so.
That's all I have.
Okay, great.
I have a question for you. The Census, did they give you any diversity statistics for the City of Pickwa?
There is, and I can pull those and give to you. Sure will. Be happy to. Yeah, there's a lot of data, and we can. I just picked out two or three things that I thought were pretty significant.
Those are great things.
Great. All right. Well, why don't we start with our commissioners' report? Commissioner Vote.
Well, I'd like to wish everybody an upcoming Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And I'd like to thank Steve and Becky for their services to the city. I remember when she relieved Lucy, took over this job. That's a long time. And she's been here ever since I've been on the commission, and thanks, Beck, for doing a great job. That's all I have. You're welcome.
Commissioner Martin.
I can keep mine short. His words. Just do it again.
Just do it again.
Yep.
Right. Thank you. Commissioner Lee.
Hey, pretty much the same. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody. I want you to enjoy your holiday. Thank you, Becky and Steve Cool. We appreciate you. We really do. And people who have questions for the commission and for the city, you've got no better person to go to than the city manager. If you bring it to his attention, he will get the problem addressed. It may not get you the answer that you may want, but he will address it and take care of it. So Gary, I appreciate everything you've done. Appreciate you do a great job, and thank you for all you do as well. And with that said, I'm done.
Commissioner Short.
Well, I guess I could say the same thing. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, but have a safe New Year, please. As Chris and I, being police officers, we used to work New Year's Eve on many years and saw many of things that most of you would never want to see.
Never want to.
So please be safe out there. And also, Becky and Steve Cool, thank you very much. You're going to be sorely missed. That's it.
Thank you. Yeah, I echo everybody's comments, and thanks for Becky and Steve and for the many years that you have given to the city to help this commission and the city move forward, so thank you. Also, just a reminder, we are moving into our winter months, and I encourage our residents to pay attention to your neighbors, especially your elderly neighbors, in light of weather and a variety of other things. Just pay attention to your neighbors and, you know, lend a helping hand if you get snowed in or whatever else like that. Please check on your neighbors just to make sure that everybody's okay. You know, the more that we can be neighborly to one another, the more that we can reach out to those around us, the better we will be as a community. So just an encouragement as the weather gets colder and the snow happens and a variety of ice and things like that, just look out for those around you. And that is all we have. I now need a motion to adjourn to executive session to consider pending or imminent litigation.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
Commissioner Lee.
Aye.
Commissioner Short.
Aye.
Commissioner Vote.
Aye.
Mayor Hines.
Aye. We are moving to executive session.